I hereby call to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Colorado Hills Board of Commissioners. So excited to not have this on my face right now. Ah, that's so great. I saw that the numbers were as low as they've been since something like last July or something like that today.
Really good.
Good to hear. Well, let's get started with pledge allegiance, please. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you would, please join me for a moment of silence. It was almost silent. I felt I got with the car while I was back in the eighties, no?
No, not mine.
Yeah, it's you.
No, no. Too far away.
All right. Y'all have an agenda in front of you, so at this point, hopefully, we know what to do.
Move to approve that agenda, Mayor.
That's a really good idea. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Any none? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. And the motion carries. First item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is about a zoning amendment request. I will hand it over to our town attorneys.
Mayor, there will be a public hearing, as the mayor said, and the following rules and procedure will apply to this hearing. A public notice of the hearing is published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards that meets or exceeds statute requirements for the subject matter. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner, and these written statements are going to be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing. Also, they have been submitted in full to the town clerk, or should be. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue into a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statement can be taped. No debates shall occur, and also when coming forward, just identify yourself by giving your name and address. Public hearing is now coming to order, and this hearing is being called for the purpose of the Colorado Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: A zoning amendment request to Chapter 153 Tag 002: Definitions and 153 Tag 177 H8: Outdoor Dining Activity Areas to Allow Cell Shades. We do not have anybody signed up to speak, so I'll just call from the floor. Is there anyone who would like to speak now regarding the public hearing? Again, you'll be allowed, there will be public comment to follow, so if there's matters not relevant to this hearing, you can speak then. Otherwise, please come up and identify yourself. All right. Turn it over.
All right. It's always simple when there aren't a lot of public comment there, but... So for those who might not be familiar, cell shades are these big triangular things that keep the sun off your head and might be more stable than umbrellas, according to many. So you guys have the proposal in front of you, so if there aren't any objections, this has been given a blessing by our staff and the plating board as well. Unless there's any comments, I'm ready to make a motion, please. I'll make a motion of approval. Orders 153.002: Definitions and 153.177H8: Outdoor Dining Activity Areas Allow Cell Shades is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Colorado Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides additional options for the outdoor dining experience. Second.
You got it.
We have a motion on the floor and a double second.
Couple seconds.
That's right. Take your pick. Is there any further discussion?
I think it's a neat thing. I think it looks so much better than the umbrellas on the picnic tables and stuff. I think it would be good.
Yeah, certainly safer than umbrellas, I would think. Birds shoot straight up.
They can become projectile.
Yes, they can.
A lot better.
Big thanks to staff. I worked with the applicant about getting it codified in a way that keeps it safe and makes sure that they look nice and we have remedies if they get in disrepair. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The motion carries. So now that we've gotten through our public hearing, and that, the next item is our town attorney's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. And as part of my agenda, actually the only item, I'm going to request that the Board of Commissioners enter into a closed session. This is being entered into pursuant to NCGS 143-318-3. Purpose being to preserve attorney-client privilege concerning certain legal matters that are out there. So if the board is so inclined, the motion would be in order to enter into closed session.
I move to enter into closed session, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So we are going to closed session. We're going upstairs.
Yes, please.
Everybody make yourself at home. We hopefully won't take too terribly long. Do we vote to come out of closed session, or no?
Just go.
Just come.
Gather once, please.
Just gather one. We go into closed session so little that I forget how to do it.
And that's a good thing, yeah.
Well, the school board, we have a motion to come out of closed session, but I just gather this, and we are out of closed session. Thank you for your patience, everybody.
You gather that well.
Mayor, I'll make a quick report of our closed session. So while in closed session, we did discuss certain items, and in doing so, we preserved the attorney-client privilege, of course, for various legal issues. Further, we reviewed the, or you guys, sorry, reviewed the August night 2021 closed session minutes. I'm going to ask you guys to make whatever motion you are inclined to make, but to approve or disapprove the minute. But I would ask for time, if you will, to allow me to review these minutes before we make a decision on whether they're going to be opened to the public.
That's approved.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
All right.
I'll second it. Motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Any none? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, thanks to the public for your patience with that. We are now to public comment, which we do twice in each meeting, for those who might not be familiar. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for a group. We just ask that you identify yourself and where you live. We have one person signed up, and she can get us started. Ms. Hooper.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Hooper, representing League of Women Voters of Dare County, here to present the 2022 Citizen's Guide: Your Guide to Community Services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national government agencies, voting information, emergency members, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the State League of Women Voters Citizen Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward publication expenses. Thank you, and thanks to all the staff members who helped update information for this year's version. League members are now distributing 6,600 copies of the guide from Duck to Hatters Village, Roanoke Island, and mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the BOM and president centers, as well as town and county offices. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is open to anyone of voting age, male or female. Students 16 and older may join for free, and new members are always welcome. We thank you for your support, and we know you'll find our guide very useful. So I have 20 copies that have been given to me to hand to you. Where would y'all like them?
Take over. Bye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Please share our gratitude and appreciation with the League. Anyone else like to speak at our first public comment? We're doing this again at the end of the meeting. Yes?
I would like to. First time I've ever spoken in front of a microphone.
That's fine.
Yeah. John Kirschmeyer, 508 Burns Drive, Colorado Hills. I'm here to talk about the outdoor seating and the importance of having safe outdoor seating, particularly with the COVID going on. I realize around the world, around the country, that restrictions are being relaxed and all that kind of stuff, but people are probably still getting sick, still, you know, not making all that kind of stuff. Our outdoor dining last year was an overwhelming success with the COVID. And I understand that it was operational because of the emergency order or state of emergency and all that kind of stuff. I would like all to strongly consider, because we still have people coming in requesting outside seating. We've got people that actually came last year that are calling us now that we're reopened, wanting to sit outside. So I want to do, have a safe, comfortable environment, and I would like to see if it would be possible to do the tents again this summer or through the season. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to bring up that I entered the text amendment for the sale clause. Okay. Have y'all made a decision on that?
Yes, we did.
Oh, well, thank you very much. My only concern with it is, you know, I will start on it tomorrow, and I understand you're who I need to talk to about that. But it's still, realistically, we know what's going on with the supply chain. We know what's going on. You know, I've got to get it surveyed and engineered, and then the sale clause, and then find somebody to put it in. So realistically, it could be late fall before it actually gets done, but I will do my diligence and do it, start tomorrow. So anyways, I would like all to consider the tents again for the outdoor dining if we may possibly do it for this season, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, all the motions, anyway, can be kind of confusing, even to me. All right, one more time, one more chance to speak of public comment. Anyone else? Seeing no one moving around, I will call, bring our public comment to a close. Board, any other response to public comment?
No.
John, we appreciate you taking the time. Thanks for coming to our stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, introductions and presentations. We have anything that I'm not thinking of?
Next, sir.
All right.
We've done pretty good, Mayor. We've come this far and Pete hasn't said a word yet.
Must be doing something right. Our next item is ongoing business. I know the town manager has some information about the town charter amendment that we've been working on.
Yes, sir. The board has been discussing this since back in November. We followed the terms of the general statutes as to how you could make this change. This change will allow for the mayor's term to change from two years to four years, which will be consistent with the commissioners. We've held the public hearing at the February 7th meeting. By statute, no action could be taken at that time. However, action may be taken at this meeting, which is the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. And if the board is in support, then a motion would be in order. And again, just clarification for our audience, this changes the mayor's term of office from two years to four years.
All right, as Mr. has mentioned, we have the opportunity to make a motion. As we've mentioned in previous meetings, this is really about, not about me, but about the position. That's why I'm stopping.
I can tell you if you want.
I'll make a motion to amend the town charter to change the mayor's terms from two years to four years. Do we need...
And clarify the neatorial voting rights.
Okay, clarify the voting rights. Do we need a time on that, or is that...
It's my understanding that this will be for the next election, as we discussed at the previous meetings. It doesn't give any unfair advantage or any unfair disadvantage to anyone.
Okay.
That's far enough in advance, right. So we have a motion from Ms. Ingram and a second down here for Mr. Gray. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. So good work done there. Next item on our agenda is moving on to new business. The first item is number one, site plan review for 902 South Virginia Dare Trail. It's called Ocean Breeze Town Home, six multifamily buildings, 31 residential units, 88 bedrooms, pool, it's water improvements. Are we suddenly making a presentation about it, or are we just...
I'm happy to, as you said, it's six multifamily buildings with 31 units totaling 88 bedrooms, a community pool, associated site improvements in the commercial zone. It's a permitted use in the commercial zone. The site plan also includes the improvements of the Corgan Street as a town right-of-way. The planning board put a couple of conditions on it. Staff recommends approval of the condition as outlined above. I will state that this particular condition will be addressed when the Public Services Department approves the street plan. So a motion would be in order with the condition as outlined, and the town manager's memo.
All right. Questions, lots?
So this condition still exists to approve with that condition?
It's one of those conditions that it could exist. You know, when you get out there, and the way our ordinance reads is it would have to meet the approval of the Public Services Director or their designee.
But it would still be a condition of the approval for the site plan?
It would be for it to meet the approval of the Public Services Director if they run into that issue.
Which they might not.
It's kind of an unknown, and that's why we have that catch-all in the ordinance.
I would move that we approve this site plan, 902 South Virginia Dare Trail, with the condition outlined.
That's great. We've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Oh, a second down, Mayor.
Got a second down here. Any further discussion? I saw Mr. Ray reaching for the microphone. Anything you want to put in? Nope, okay. All right, one more chance. Any further discussion? It is a beautiful plan. There's a lot of great stuff on there, the tile with the sidewalks, and I know there's a lot that goes into the project of that scoop. So thanks to staff for all the work I know that you probably put in with the developer. All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We have a couple more site plans to get through. Our next one is 100 East Fifth Street. A row of houses in the cluster home development variety. 11 four-bedroom, two three-bedroom residential units, community pool and pool building. This is going to be right next to our new neighborhood target when it gets together.
Yes, sir, it is, and I will let Mr. Ray handle this one.
All right.
No problem. Thank you.
Tonight in the audience, Mike Robinson has submitted the site plan on behalf of Fifth Street KDHLC to construct a cluster home development, as you said, in a 11 four-bedroom and two three-bedroom units. Does include a community pool, pool building, drive-by and associated site improvements at 100 East Fifth Street. The cluster home development is a permitted use in the commercial zone. At the February 15th Planning Board meeting, they moved this plan and voted to approve it to Board of Commissioners for considerations with several conditions. Most of the conditions have been addressed, however, the following condition from Public Services remains. It's a street comment regarding some stormwater improvements, but I know Pete is comfortable with it moving along. As he's discussed this with the applicant, it's also some field stuff or some minor tuning for grades and things of that nature. So staff recommends approval of the site plan with the condition above, and a motion would be in order. I'll put it on the screen as well in case there's any comments, and I'm sure Mike would be happy to answer questions he may have.
It's interesting how, you know, when we imagine cluster homes, you might imagine something different. This definitely falls in that category, but it has these side benefits of not having, you know, 11 driveways going onto Fifth Street. It just has these two openings, which I'm sure will be safer by anybody's, even a layperson's estimation. And the uniformity of it will look nice and crisp down that street.
Yeah, and if you notice, you know, it matches East Avalon, you know, to the T for how many structures there are.
Right, same as the next.
So it really matches the neighborhood quite well, so I think that was commendable.
Right, and in a world where houses are getting bigger and bigger, they're actually small. That's the whole point of having that in our ordinance. So it's working, as we like to say. It's working. Any other thoughts, questions from the board? Again, it's great to have all these plans. It's like candy. Over here, go through, see, cool ideas people come up with.
Yeah. I agree.
All right. Other than that, then we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented at 100 East Fifth Street with the condition listed. Is it necessary to read the entire condition?
Town manager's memo.
With the condition listed, that is clear enough. I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And we have a second from Mr. Gray. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next site plan is the car wash down on Eighth. It's actually 2011 South Corotan, technically. 3,000, almost 3,000 square foot drive-through, 26 parking spaces. Associated site modification, a cool little sidewalk that goes around our sign.
Planning Board did review this, Mayor, and recommended approval as presented, and staff recommends it as well.
All right, so we've got recommendation from staff and planning board. And I know that planning staff is probably all involved in this as well. I like the landscaping design. Looks nice. Lots of greenery there. Looks like above and beyond the code, so I like it when people go the extra mile. It's always nice. Okay, you can see where our little sign is there. So any other questions for staff or applicant? All right, if not, then we're looking for one more motion.
We all make a motion for approval, recite plan review, 2011 South Corotan Highway, as presented in the manager's memo.
Super. All right, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
And a second from my right. Any other discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. So now we're on to street improvement recommendation, but I think we will retire, but, you know. Thank you, guys. Mr. Pete approaches the dais. And he's going to tell us how we're going to make our infrastructure great again.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. Pete Burkhammer. And before I start briefly about the master stormwater plan, I have to comment. For the last 45 years, one of my businesses has been to submit site plans and other plans to certain unknown jurisdictions to the north. The average time from first submitted to approval, without even involving the governing body, is about four months. Somehow, we find a way to get it done in about a third of that time, and it's a pleasure to work with people that understand that time is money and for business. The item that I'm up here for right now is the limited interim stormwater management plan update. We last did a full update to the stormwater plan in 2010. I prepared this because A, it had been a long time, and B, I thought it would help us consider some of the capital projects that you're about to vote on. And thirdly, C, I thought it would be useful to the staff, the board, and the citizenry if we had a fairly succinct statement of what we're trying to do with our street-driven stormwater management projects. And that's really the only action item, other than to accept the report as an informational instrument that it is.
Excuse me, Pete, for interrupting.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We've jumped to number five. We'll come back. We'll double back and do number four.
I apologize.
That's okay. I could tell they were trying to find where we were. We're on number five, and then we'll come back to number four.
Pushing 74, and my vision is beginning to get a little bit disconnected.
I've done it myself.
Thank you for indulging me, Madam Manager, since I started on that item, but if you want to go ahead and finish it since we're on it.
That's fine.
Yes.
The policy basically says there are four reasons we do drainage in public streets. We do it first and foremost to keep the street dry during and after a rain, so it's possible. We do it to provide a drainage system to receive surface flows from adjacent residential properties. And we do it thirdly to keep the substructure of the street from falling apart and causing us to have to rebuild the street sooner than we should. But we've never really stated before the fourth item. With our new tendency to include measures to manage the groundwater, we found that we can help some folks that they or their predecessors have gotten themselves in trouble by building a little lower than the road and having no place for the stormwater to go. So we've offered up a policy statement for inclusion, in whatever form the staff sees fit, into the ordinance or wherever, that our intent is to do that where it's feasible and to the extent it helps. Not to guarantee anyone who might be one, two, or three feet lower than the street that this will fix their problem, but it will help to some degree, and in many cases, fairly completely. But without any guarantee, but just as a statement that this has been found to be cost-effective. It helps us with purposes one, two, and three, and if it can also help our citizens, still being very cost-effective, I thought it would be good for us to be on record as saying it's a goal that we're pursuing. We're kind of already doing it. It doesn't take us in any new directions. It just sort of codifies what we've been doing for the last 10, 12 years.
And I could speak to that, too, if I can, right? As the chairman of that committee, the committee unanimously agreed that that would be something we would be asking the board to consider. Like Pete said, it doesn't really change anything. It just kind of reasserts that, when possible, we'll do that. And we'll be, you know, it doesn't create any new requirements or liabilities or anything like that. It just says that, when possible, we will try to mitigate that. And I think that's why we all agreed to it, for your consideration.
So like a planning document, it's guidance for decision-making?
Yes.
It would be a policy that the street subcommittee and the staff would use in making a recommendation for a capital project. It's something they've already been doing for years, but by bringing it to the board as a policy, it becomes something that we can point to when we work with our citizens on some of their complaints or requests. We can say, this is the policy that we follow, and we hope that what we're doing will help you, but there's other things that are prioritized, but this could help you, too.
So staff recommends it as well, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be used specifically in making recommendations to the board. There are several policies that the boards made in the past when doing street capital projects. Policies that they say, you know, we want to fix our poor streets first. So when we do capital projects, we look at poor streets first before we look at even unimproved streets. So this would add to that policy for the holistic approach to our capital projects.
I would say they have an excellent track record with what Pete and Steve have been doing. I've seen it firsthand in my neighborhood, and it's worked really well, and it's a good program. Good policy to have.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to us, I think that's a great idea, we'll have staff work in that direction, yeah?
Having brashly hijacked your agenda and reversed items four and five.
So you need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that the, the board approve the item number five, limited interim stormwater management plan policy.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Was that good enough for you?
Yes, no, yes, sir, thank you.
All right, great. We do have the, the motion and the second on the floor. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Such a, no. Please proceed. Sorry. All good.
Anyway, the street improvement and special projects committee's other, um, decision was to recommend that we move forward with our project this fall, fall of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. A project that begs a shorter name, but it's Seminole Indian, US one fifty-eight drainage, and West Durham drainage now. We'll get an acronym or something for you. And it also sets up, if it's, again, your pleasure, always subject to your final decision, it sort of brings Wrightsville Boulevard into the on-deck circle for the twenty-four, twenty, or twenty-three, twenty-four project. But we'll talk more about that at another time. This is a great project, mercifully, it is a smaller project than West Third Street, and we all could use that after two biggies in a row. But I'm really excited about the way it, especially the one fifty-eight drainage part of it. Everybody from West Third Street up beyond Fifth and including West Durham is gonna see benefits from it. But as we've gotten into the details, it's going to bring significant relief for the West Durham and vicinity area, and do so in a way that's going to require less intensive maintenance efforts by the town staff. So lots to like in that project. The other thing, Seminole Street, you'd already approved that before, and we had to carve it out because Third Street was getting bloated. We've added in a couple of things. The report speaks for itself, so the ask there is that you approve Seminole Indian bypass drainage and West Durham as the upcoming fall project. Approve for us to design it and put it out to bid. And packaged with that is our proposal for the design services dated February twenty-fourth. I'll stand by for any questions you may have about those. Or any questions on the progress of West Third Street, how long do I want to keep that terrible road closure in fact?
Looks like a ton of fun over there.
Yes, sir.
A ton of fun. You slipped it.
Well, I just, I just wanted to repeat, as the chairman of that committee, uh, street improvement committee, I wanted to say that, yes, as you guys know already, this was the on-deck project. We've already talked about this previously, but I think, um, you know, we're all excited about any relief that it would give to that West Durham area. We had some people here at that, at our committee meeting, uh, some citizens from that area, and we're hoping that it helps those people. So, but the real, I guess, mention I wanted to say is that this was the on-deck plan, of course, and there's nothing really new here. Moreover, the, the next one that's in the hole, so to speak, would be, would be Wrightsville. And that plan is going to, everybody's looking forward to that as well, it's important for that area. So everything's basically moving as, as we've had talked about previously.
The only thing that worries everybody right now is cost controls, because so many things have been changing in price from minute to minute. And then the, you know, you probably have, um, I would assume that you've factored this in. You know, we're balancing these needs with the best use of the taxpayer's money. If there was any difference between the acceleration of price on one kind of work over the other kind of work, that might make a different decision, but I assume that's all factored in. But I just want to put for the record that those sorts of things are part of the decision-making criteria.
It makes it difficult to.
I'm sure, I'm sure. It's difficult all around. So we're giving a nod for those listening via audio.
Mayor, I would, uh, I would move that the board approve the street improvement recommendations for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year and twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four plan year as presented in this item's packet. And that'll be one motion.
We've got a lot to go.
You can make it all together.
I could.
Yes, sir.
And to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the engineering services agreed, agreement that's presented by American Engineering Associates, Southeast PA Inc., including preliminary engineering, design, and bidding phases for the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three project, Seminole Street Indian Drive and US one fifty-eight drainage, along with any necessary budget amendments and capital reserve fund expenditures.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Until we get an acronym, the project, formerly known as Prince. All right, we have a great motion on the floor. We got a second over here from the chairman of this committee. So is there further discussion or questions for Pete?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you for your hard work, sir.
I'll be officially to put KDH Fall Project Prince on the cover sheet, that's what it says.
Look at that symbol, it says formerly known as. Formerly known as. Gotta keep it light. Stormwater management plan we talked about, so we were all good there, right? All right, so just wanted to make sure.
Number six.
We're on to number six appointments. Have some terms coming up, some folks interested in serving again.
Yes, sir.
Open that up for discussion. Folks that work with these committees. Of course, I'm assuming the, uh, well, I don't make any assumptions, let me let you guys do it.
I'm good with it.
I'm ready to make a mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if the board is, unless anybody else has a question.
Satisfied.
I think we're really starting to get to read each other's minds now.
Well, the guy's too faint, they're trying to make.
They can see each other's faces, that helps. As many poker faces going through here.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Howard Buchanan to the planning board, and that we reappoint Christine Stafford to the personnel. Did it right.
Second that.
Personnel board.
Personnel board, there we are. Motion for those two appointments, and we got a second here from Mr. Gray. Any further discussion about the appointments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Congratulations to the returning appointees.
Um, Mayor, I'm going to have to, I'm gonna have to excuse myself, I spoke to, um, town, town manager, and I apologize for that, but I, um, hopefully all votes are almost done.
We got most of them, but it's all good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think our next item is an oath of office, so are we gonna do that up here?
Yes, please. And, um, Mayor Michael's family is here with him, I'd like to invite them, whoever would like to come up.
That would be great.
All of you come up and hold the Bible. Um, as, as stated in the, in the memo, Mayor, Michael joined the Killable Hills staff in twenty-fourteen. He was sworn in as the deputy town clerk in twenty-eighteen, and he has served as the interim town clerk since December the seventeenth of twenty-twenty-one. He has clerked most of the town boards and committees, and has clerked the board commissioners' meetings for several years. Michael was trained.
By the best.
Thank you. But, um, Mary Quiddly, Michael has completed the, um, School of Government's Clerk Certification Institute in November of twenty-twenty-one. And Mayor Sproul will administer the oath of office.
Tell me what it is. Do you just want to read it?
Get through that, and get to the.
Place your hand on the Bible. Take a deep breath.
Hi, James Michael Odell.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
That I will faithfully, uh, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As the town clerk for the town of Killable Hills. As the town clerk.
As the town clerk for the town of Killable Hills. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Very nice. My man is way. Okay.
Big shoes, big shoes.
Good job.
If they want shoes, what are they?
France.
They have.
Big crocs, good ones.
And most likely different colors.
I was trying to make some joke about a lead foot from that conversation we had Saturday, the.
Oh, she had, she had a lead foot today, yes.
On the mower and otherwise. All right, our next item of the agenda is committee reports.
Nothing to do, I'm here.
You're not here, Mayor. All right. Commissioner's agenda?
Couple of things.
Please, go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, thank our board, thank Michael, uh, thank Debbie for our, our retreat.
Yes.
It was a lot of fun. And, you know, learned a lot more about each other, for sure. And, uh, after all, we had a productive time. I want to congratulate Town Clerk Odell. You know, congratulations, sir. I would say that there wasn't one, one piece of unfinished business from our retreat, there was some talk about a beauty contest. We've got all the bunches.
That's what you said, we need to get the details.
Uh, you know, it's one mystery that can't wait to be solved.
But you've got family here, I'm sure they're willing to spill under public comment.
We encourage the family to talk to the, our PR department about the press release.
That's, that's all I have, Mayor.
That was great.
The only thing, I'd, I'd like to offer some congratulations to Michael as well. I, I think he is very, very efficient in his job, and everything I've seen from him has been just top shelf. So congratulations, I'm glad to have you backing us up.
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you.
Yes, couldn't have said it better. We, uh, we're very fortunate to, to have your knowledge and experience going into this position. And your sense of humor. I have to say that because I talked about West Virginia. And the extra nice, to Michael from now on, not that I wasn't always. Just dig it all, all right. Um, Mayor's agenda, that's, that's everybody, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Trash Attack is back. It's going to be in person, yeah, another thing. The masks are off, and the trash will get its act. Uh, the event is back, it's gonna be held at Aviation Park on Saturday, April ninth, nine to one-thirty. We're in date the following Sunday, the tenth, uh, one to three-thirty. As we transition back to our first in-person with, uh, you know, getting out of COVID here, kind of be a, kind of a light event, uh, to keep everybody comfortable, so in addition to a red t-shirt, participants will be offered bottled water, individual wrapped snacks, wrapped snacks, instead of something a little less comfortable in this moment. And due to school scheduling timelines, the Trash Tech will reintroduce its popular poster contest in twenty-twenty-three, because, uh, kind of short lead time this time around. So I encourage everybody to come out and participate. You can find the information on the town's web, town's website. We have two proclamations to enter into the record this month. One is the, that April twenty-twenty-two is Autism Awareness Month in Killable Hills. There is a, I couldn't think of the word, whereas, whereas, the, um, why am I blanking on the name? But you see the, the page right behind there, I'm losing my mind. So, and we also have April twenty-second, uh, April twenty-twenty-two is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Killable Hills. So, uh, with these honors and these things both, uh, proclamation, that's the word I was looking for, proclamation, could not get it out. Uh, this honors the issues of children that are important to our community, vital to society, and I recommend approval of these proclamations and a motion. Or motions would be in order, and I will make that motion.
Second?
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for your support, and the motion carries. There's another word for it that's gonna come to me in like a minute.
Resolution.
Resolution, there it is. Sometimes your brain is just like, break free. Oh my gosh, all right, so. Got myself lost. So, uh, next is the town manager's agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Michael as well, and also thank him for how he did step in in December, and he's been doing this position since, um, December. And also thank his family for coming this evening, it was really nice to see them.
Yes.
And that's all.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. The minutes from the February seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the January twenty-twenty-two monthly report. There is a budget transfer, and we've talked about this before. This is when a division within a department moves money. It's allowed to be done by the budget officer, I just have to report it to you. This was an item that, um, was transferred from the Finance Department to the, um, MIS. It's some, some software to help us track and account for installment debt, as well as meet the new Gatsby eighty, the D eighty-seven, um, requirements for calculation of financial statements to close, disclosure. A budget amendment that is not in your packet, that we got after your packet was delivered, but we felt that it was, um, important that we bring it to you in a timely manner. And it's the five thousand dollars to appropriate the twenty-one, twenty-two government education access channel grant. Item number four is the approval of the third-year audit proposal from Porter and Company, PA. They, um, completed the last audit and for last year. The agreement for the third year includes a consumer price index increase of three-point-six percent for a fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two audit for forty-two thousand five hundred. And we recommend approval of the, um, fee. Approval of the consent agenda will record the amount, and it will also allow for the execution by the proper officials. And lastly, um, a resolution of intent to permanently close a portion of West Eighth Street. Um, West Eighth Street is there, divides the line, as you know. This is between the Nags Head and Killable Hills Water Plant. This was a request from the town of Nags Head, is that they did major improvements to their, um, public works area. There's no detriment to the town, and, and we would support that. There's no detriment to the town, and we would support that. What this does is a, it's a resolution of intent, and it sets the date for the public hearing, which would be Monday, April the 11th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
Interesting about the Eighth Street theory. So, any, I have a couple of questions about that, about the Eighth Street. Please, this is the moment to ask them.
Would you like for us to pull it off the consent agenda, or are you comfortable just asking?
Well, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about it. What is their intent in having that abandoned?
If I understand it correctly, it's enabling them to use that, not necessarily use that area, but use that square footage as they do their development of their public works area.
To go into the calculation of...
So they can meet their ordinance.
Right. It's already their property.
Yeah.
It's just, it just would be abandoned as a right-of-way and would become part of the property. We currently use it to store lifeguard stands in the off-season, our portion.
Well, my, and a further question that I have is, is there any possibility that it can be used as an access?
To?
To the fresh pond.
I don't think so because you run, you run into those.
The plants?
The plants.
Okay, okay.
That would, that would not be...
Because the infrastructure is there to either side of it?
Yeah, that would not be where, where I think.
Okay.
The fresh pond access would be for the future. Go ahead.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the map right now, the red line, there's an existing fence, barbed fence, that secures both of ours for the security for the water plant. So I think the goal of eliminating the right-of-way, they can go from maybe a 30-yard or 30-foot setback from the street to a side yard setback, which allows them to better utilize that area for their plan improvements.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
And we also have plans for, in that master plan that we adopted last month for some building improvements in our plant, which, that's, that's saying benefit to us, so we move some setback lines and give us more flexibility as well.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you. Did you get where you have us going though, yeah?
Well, I just think we need to explore everything.
Always, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We have a consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is our second time for public comments. Family members like to say anything to the board? This is your moment. Everyone else has left.
Something.
Yeah, anything that you want to give it. I'm sorry.
Any story, anything you want to share.
Just disclose that it's being recorded.
Well done, guy with that.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity, because records are kept forever. It's not a threat, that's just the rules. I'm just saying. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, I will close public comments, and no need to have response to that. So we're down to our favorite last motion.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.